Good morning, everyone. I'm John Colwell and as always, I'm pleased and honored to chair this joint meeting of the Power Authority and Canal System. This is our obviously first meeting of the new year. Our first meeting subsequent to the conclusion of the Buffalo Bill season. So a very brief pause and moment of silence and respect. The better team won, but yay, we will be back. We will return. This meeting's been duly noticed as required by open meetings law. I'm pleased as always to welcome Gil and the entire NIPA team and otherwise call the meeting to order. We've all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Unless any other, unless anyone has any proposed amendments to that agenda, I'd ask for a motion to adopt that which was presented to us.
So move.
Second, thanks, Michael Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The agenda is adopted as we typically do. In the first hour or so, an executive session. I'd asked for a motion to conduct such a session pursuant to Article 1.5 of the Public Officers Law.
So move.
Second.
Second, thanks, Tony. Thanks, Dennis. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Set. Will adjourn to executive session for plus or minus. And look forward to returning then. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Pleased to be back with you and as we restart, if I could ask for a motion to resume our meeting in open session.
So move.
Second from Dennis, I heard Dennis, somebody back in there. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We're back in open session and as always, no votes were taken while we were in executive session. We've all had an opportunity and we've been polled relative to any potential conflicts on actions we'll be taking later. Any changes to the indications that have otherwise been provided to Karen? If not, we'll move with some pace. Last two or three meetings have been very forward looking, focused strategically. Operational planning and budgets and other key initiatives. Today, there's that we start with a heavy dose of looking back. Typical for this time of the year to look back on the outcomes of the prior year. And I'm very pleased to introduce Gil to proudly talk about our accomplishments in the face of adversity. A very good year under any circumstance. Reflects all the better, given everything that we and the rest of the world's been up against. Gil, for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, management team and the public listening. I will talk about our, just a quick update on COVID and then a number of items that reflect back to what we accomplished last year. Next slide, please. COVID, we have done really well despite the difficulties and the complications of this pandemic. We kept our employees safe. That's always been our number one priority, safe and healthy. And we operated our power system generation and transmission, no matter what, and we did that well reliably across the state all year round. Next slide, please. As you can see here, I ask you to focus on the right side of this chart, the red dots and line. That's the the number, I'm sorry, the, the kind of orange, the number of positive cases that we have has been really low recently, but really low all year round relative to the infection rate on the state. We have a very specific, we developed a very specific COVID countermeasures protocol that we adhere to. As you can see on the left side, the various triggers and specific action that we take based on those triggers. Next slide, please. Couple of things that we did right from the beginning is to have a very robust testing strategy and contact tracing strategy. In addition to our education and making sure that our employees are following CDC and Department of Health guidelines. We also partnered with SUNY and SUNY Upstate Medical in Syracuse for a very scalable saliva-based testing protocol that we have been employing across our power plants and control centers statewide. Next slide, please. I'm very, very proud to report that despite the pandemic and all the difficulty that came with it, that we met our each and every performance metric that we set forth. Some of them were adjusted because of COVID, but nevertheless, this is a statement of great execution by the employees of NIPA and Canals in collaboration with our Board of Trustees and our stakeholders. Next slide, please. Some other items that are notable to highlight. We had a very good plan on how to return and how to open and close the valve in terms of returning to work. I mentioned already contact tracing and testing. We communicated regularly and often with our employees and our customers. We helped our customers by giving them a forbearance and paying their electric bills and expanding the hydro allocations for their power to make their budgeting more predictable during this deep, deep recession from the pandemic. I mentioned about our countermeasures. It's a very good protocol that guides our day-to-day operation. We've been working with other entities, both within and outside the state. And so it's been really a great year. It speaks to the resilience of NIPA. We did not only bounce back, we bounced forward and I'm very proud of everyone's effort last year. Next slide, please. From a financial perspective, we issued bonds during the fog of war in the spring of last year to make sure that we were ready to face whatever the pandemic would bring to us for the rest of that year. And we did so and maintain a good and healthy liquidity to run our operations. Our credit ratings were maintained. Were not really impacted and are by maintaining a very strong balance sheet. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we adjusted, we had to adjust our capital programs because of the pause when we had to shut down all of our projects within NIPA and projects with our customers. But after we revised and adjusted our goals, I am pleased to report that we executed really well. What we decided could be done despite of the pandemic, we did and we delivered across every aspect and every metric of this capital programs. Next slide, please. We also recalibrated based on the board's feedback, our strategic plan. We call it Vision 2030. We submitted this to you last month and you agreed to approve and fund this plan and we will now move into execution starting this year. Next slide, please. We also responded to a call to action last year. Late May, early June during the racial unrest across our country. And we know that we have a role to play within our own jurisdiction, our own environment at NIPA. And we did, we developed a very forward-looking, industry-leading diversity equity and inclusion plan, which you also reviewed and approved last month. Next slide, please. Our governor announced an extremely ambitious program in his State of the State address in early January to advance our state's energy and environmental goals from large-scale renewables to offshore wind to offshore manufacturing in Albany and Brooklyn and the construction of the Green Energy Transmission Superhighway, which we will play a pivotal role. In fact, of the five project that he announced during his State of the State, three of those five are NIPA's projects. These are the three projects that we are leading to build as the anchor of that green Energy Transmission Superhighway, our Smart Path, which is from Messina to Krogan in the Adirondacks. Our project that we are partnered with Ellis Power that you approved also in our recent board meeting. We are an investor in that project. It's called AC Transmission Segment A from Marcy to New Scotland. And a project that we are in the midst of developing in, on a fast track basis, the Northern New York Transmission Line. So this, all these projects are going to be the backbone and foundation of what the governor announced in NIPA. We will play the key role in building this energy superhighway. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman. I'm very proud of the collective. NIPA, Canals and its employees, the Board of Trustees, our customers and our stakeholders. We all worked as one last year and it showed in our performance. It showed the resilience of NIPA. And I'm very proud of it and thank you very much. Give it back to the stage to you.
And thank you, Gil, as I said in the intro. Frankly, what you just recapped would be a terrific year under the best of circumstances and for what, with the benefit of your leadership and your team's terrific work, just an outstanding year, given the dynamics and the challenges that we continue to confront today. We talk like it's in the rearview mirror. Obviously, we know the pandemic isn't. But frankly, the tone and tenor is just reflective of the confidence level that's been developed that by you and your team to navigate in spite of the circumstances. So congratulations to you as our leader and to your entire team and all of NIPA for just an outstanding year and the many, many significant accomplishments that position us even better for the future. So kudos. Anything else for Gil before we have Joe, Sarah and Adam drill a little deeper?
Yeah, I just wanted to say just quickly, I echo the comments that you made, Mr. Chair, but I also wanted to say that, you know, I feel like you've done such amazing work in terms of not only showing our resiliency, but building up protocols. Particularly around, you know, sort of the response to the pandemic as it's ongoing, your response to racial unrest that happened throughout. You've laid foundations and good protocols to help us respond and build, you know, a pathway forward in the future. So our financial performance, I think, you know, even in the challenging circumstances, there are lots of utilities that would take it even, even outside of a pandemic. So just wanted to congratulate you and the team on the work that I know was very hard, under very hard circumstances, but ultimately yielded, you know, a very good story for, for NIPA and lays a wonderful pathwork for going forward in the future.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, as I said, we'll drill a little bit deeper with Joe, Sarah and Adam. So Joe, kick us off. Operationally, obviously, we, as we've seen all year long, some tremendous outcomes. Recap it for us.
All right, great. Thanks, John. And thank you, trustees and staff and everybody joining us. I think I'm still within the threshold to say Happy New Year to everybody. So yeah, as Gil pointed out, all of our, as we drill down into the actual performance metrics for operations, we obviously are Generation and Transmission Organization. That's our bent. Throughout all the fits and starts of our, our, our program, we were able to maintain the reliability of both Generation and Transmission above the thresholds we set at the beginning of the year. These are not adjusted. These are thresholds that we set prior to COVID and we're able to maintain those throughout this crisis. Equally as important and maybe more important in the final is analysis is that we were able to keep our employees safe. So we're very proud that our environmental incidents were below our target and our DART rate. I do want to just recap that the environmental incident threshold were up target wise because we did add air exceedances, which we were tracking separately. And that 29 does represent all exceedances, not only the oil spills or anything like that, but the air exceedances as well. So it's a great a great milestone to hit. Next slide, please. Just want to give the board and the public a quick update on some of the projects. It's kind of exciting. We're going to talk about one that's just getting underway. Next Generation Niagara, as you know, is the $1.1 billion capital improvement that we're doing at the Niagara Power Project. And just wanted to show you some photos of work actually happening there. And of course, at any given time, when the pandemic releases our, allows our ability to, to travel and see these things, we welcome the board to take a look at any of these things onsite when you have a chance. Very exciting work, but we were able to demolish what we call our unit control boards and governor cabinets. These are items that control the generation speed and protect the equipment. And we are going to the modern state-of-the-art equipment in those as well. And are continuing to pull some cables in the tunnels which connect all of these devices to our switchyard and other ancillary equipment in support of this work. We will be in the coming months starting our control room upgrades. This is very exciting. In the generator area, some of that equipment is 50 or 60 years old. Obviously well-maintained, but even 50, 60 years old, years ago, it was 50 or 60-year-old technology. So almost 100-year-old technology that's been operating so well there. We're going to be updating that. And with that comes new lighting, operator workstations, video display walls and things that make it more sensitive and accurate for our operators to see and be alerted as we, as we look at that as well. So our Unit 12, which is this unit here that you're seeing torn apart will be returned to service in May of '21. And the estimated completion on 213 millions contained in that $1.1 billion program. So our first one will be done. Next slide, please. On the other side of Niagara is the Lewiston Pump Generating Plant, and we're also on the other side of this capital program. So our Unit 10, which is the 11th unit that we overhauled in that capital program, was completed in December 18th of last year of 2020. And that was only impacted by a couple of unplanned work items around the rotor rim ledge to repair and of course, the fits and starts that we had in the pandemic. We are starting the PG1, the first pump unit, which is going to be the 12th unit. On January 4th, we actually started that. We are within the budget. You probably, it was many years ago, but as we talked about this over the years, reminded that it was a $160 million plan to be completed in December of 2022. And in both cases, we are on target for budget and schedule. And I would entertain any questions on, on my report.
Joe, go back to your scorecard for a minute. Echo what I just said in general, outstanding results for you and the team. But give us your thoughts with the benefit of hindsight on the why of this. In a year when one would have thought we wouldn't string all greens. Why did we have such positive outcomes under adverse circumstances, real or perceived?
Yeah, I think from my perspective, the number one reason would be focus. I think what, what happened with the fits and starts is people were, whenever you're under duress, your senses are heightened. And I think what happened is we spent a lot of attention to stopping nonessential work immediately and recognize that we had people that we had to focus on doing that safely, saving off projects. We couldn't actually stop things immediately. There were things that we had to continue with essential personnel to put them in a safe condition. Equally important, as we calculated the way we were bringing the work back, we did a very similar themed upstart, which we're standing down if necessary, making sure that we had not only the, the normal protocols of tying off and fire protective clothing, hard hat, safety shoes, but also the new paradigms around social distancing, the face masks and making sure we had the right equipment for them, that all of that equipment was also fire retardant. And I think that just heightened the awareness. We were communicating way more than we would normally do in executing and starting that work back up, doing the safety tailgates. And of course, we continued to reiterate the normal safety practices as well. So I think people just had a heightened awareness, a heightened sensitivity as they were bringing it back to work and it worked in our favor. Of course, we learned some best practices out of that that we're going to perpetuate because obviously we don't want to have a pandemic to force that focus, but I think that definitely had in a kind of a weird way, a positive impact on our sensitivity to the safety nature.
And in terms of generation and transmission, are we starting to see some of the paybacks for the investments we've begun to make and reliability and system reliability and the like? Is it favorable, we'll call them weather, but external factors? I mean, again, there to be running frankly, ahead of what's a high bar. What are your thoughts there? Meaning more importantly, can we institutionalize all of that going forward? Does that position us to make this more than an aberration? This becomes our new normal going forward?
Yeah, I think so. I think what's going on here is that obviously from a revenue standpoint, that we don't really have control of the markets. But what that causes is us, is, is that to be more important that we're available when we are called upon. So we've been working very closely with the commercial operations team and ERM and dispatching our units in a way that optimizes the, not only the capacity and energy that we're always relied upon, but some of the ancillary services as well. So we're, we're going to be able to take advantage when we can of, of, of making sure that we're available when renewables enter the system or storage and other technologies come in. And we are able to ramp our units and have an operating paradigm that's wider than it was in the past based on the upgrades that we have for this equipment. And I think we're going to see the fruits of that even more effectively going forward. Obviously, these are things that are outlined in our strategic vision 2030 to make sure that we're enhancing the value of it. And that's two-pronged. It's really making sure we're optimizing the operation as is and making sure that our stakeholders know the value of those systems to make, to enable really us to hit the targets for the state.
Joe, if I could follow up?
Yeah, go ahead, Trace.
One question that I had, just continuing the line of thinking, a question, a question that the chair raised. You know, along with the saying, no good deed goes unpunished. You know, when I, when I look at this, what I'm left with wondering, are we setting the targets aspirational enough? And stretching ourselves and setting the target, again, looking at the fact that we did, you know, we ended the year very impressively and even under the circumstances that we had with the pandemic. So at least, you know, are we, are you comfortable that we're setting the targets, you know, far enough? Again, aggressive enough, ambitious enough, aspirational enough?
I'm responding to that and I'm smiling because I'm never satisfied in that area. So I think you're, you're 100% right. So you'll actually see the generator market readiness is a number that we've perpetuated over the last couple of years. It is a stretched target for us. So that is quite an accomplishment and we did, as you see, exceeded quite significantly. The scale of that target is pretty wide, even though the numbers are, there would be very unreasonable for us to have a, a target, you know, below 90, say, for example. So even though, you know, that target is set very high, the band that we deal with is very small in that, in that frame. So we always revisit them every year.
Filibuster, Joe, you just have to say, yep, I agree.
I agree.
We will establish even more stretch targets in '21.
Yeah, we will. We will adjust these as our performance improves, we adjust.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for Joe?
Yeah, just real quick, Joe, I, the word eliminate is a problem for me. There's no way you're eliminating a cyber risk. It's just, it's just, it's a mitigation management or, you know, monitoring mitigation management. I just think that it's elimination of that. It's, I don't think anybody talks in those terms. There's always a risk out there.
Fair point.
No, if we could just change that word to, you know, monitor, manage and mitigate, might be something to consider.
Sounds like 3M. 3M. Nobody's all right with that.
Fair point.
All of that said, Joe, don't want to lose outstanding outcomes. Kudos to you and the team. We're obviously continuing to invest heavily. We'll be talking more about that in a couple of minutes. So great work by you, your leadership and your team for driving the, the essential component of this bus. So very, very well done.
Thank you and thank you for your support as always.
All right, Sarah, you were swimming upstream or a little more victim of the external market headwinds. So
I'm setting stretch targets.
Exactly. You and the team persevered very well in spite of that. So recap outcomes for us, please.
Right, I just, I do want to take a moment just real quickly to thank the entire commercial operations leadership team and their respective teams because amidst the global pandemic, the social unrest, the macro political environment, there was a lot of personal and professional impacts on them. And I think they did a yeoman's job in 2020. So thank you all of them. That being said, we entered 2020 with the target at the gross margin level of 335 million. And we ended the year at 293. There were a few factors that had an impact there, the first being that we had one of the most mild record winners on record, the third warmest in reported history. And then Q4 was equally mild. Secondly, we have the impacts of demand with respect to the COVID pandemic. We saw in New York City in the southeast, which is where dominant load is, that peak demand was 10% below typical levels. And on average, across the entire state, demand was down 5 to 7%. And finally, certainly the abundance of gas with their slowdown of the industrial complex across the state and the country with respect to the industry. There was, there was a high levels of inventory and we saw a 37% reduction in the cost of fuel relative to what we anticipated in October of 2019, pushing gas below a dollar. The great light within all of that is the fact that our hedging program, the volume metric and systematic program and strategy that we put together in 2020 bore fruit. And when it settled out, it settled 50 million approximately in favor for NIPA. So thank you to ERM for all the work and diligence along with this on that. On economic development, our customers are still there, as Gil highlighted when we spoke. And we are 82% allocated relative to our hydroelectric economic development programs. Typically, we see applications between 80 and 100 of them annually. This past year, we saw 59 applications and were able to allocate megawatts of hydro that supported over 9,000 jobs and over 750 million in capital commitment. Next slide. Again, I don't want to belabor the, the headwinds of COVID, but ultimately our construction projects that impact clean energy solutions and evolve were delayed by six months. That was from the New York pause, whereas many of my colleagues have articulated already. The health and safety of our employees, our contractors and our communities was first and foremost. So the ultimate six-month delay was due to the formal pause, the remobilization of our contractors, the dispensing by our customers of the CapEx that they had put on pause themselves. And ultimately, the lower capacity and the EHS protocols that we put in place to ensure that when we went back to work, it was being done safely. That being said, as Gil articulated, we provided support directly to those on the front lines, ensuring that our hospitals continue to run, the transit services that provided transport for frontline workers continue to run and the government buildings that were overseeing the pandemic response also were operating. On evolve, we, it was a twinkle in people's eyes a couple of years ago and the board provided 250 million up to 250 million to support the governor's policies. We saw that come to fruition and the first steel on the ground was put in place this year. We had an opening at La Grangeville that was attended by the Lieutenant Governor. So, and we have a robust pipeline of about 100 chargers for 2021. So just picking up momentum on that. And next slide. These are just a few of the accomplishments for 2020. Again, so much across the board when it comes to NIPA. The Build a Furl program as ADPACT 1.0. Additionally, in December, you approved ADPACT 2.0, which is providing temporary allocation for price and budget certainty to, to our customers. And already we have almost 50% applications for that in just a month. And there will be about 210 megawatts already being taken down in February. With respect to distributed resources and flexibility, just a couple of years ago, there was not even a pipeline. And now we have almost 250 megawatts in the pipeline there with Marquee Projects, as you will recall, at JFK, Community Distributed Solar, as well as the rooftop solar at the Javits Center. We have been honing in 2020, our focus on environmental justice communities and where we can bring NIPA's and where we can bring NIPA's expertise to bear there. And then finally, as part of organizational evolution, I merged the distributed energy resource advisory group with the New York Energy Manager in order to help develop a more holistic behind the meter service that will help all of those assets better compete in the market as the distribution and wholesale markets evolve. Transmission, I don't really need to go through. Gil highlighted all the work we're doing, but I'd like to give kudos to the commercial team that managed our relationship and partnership with Ellis Power to achieve Article 7, that undertook the development and positions the Northern New York project to be selected and petitioned and selected as the first priority project for NIPA. The 200 megawatts that were facilitated by executing at least our land at Paletti, which is now helping deliver a third of the goal that we set for NIPA in the CLM Vision 2030 strategy and the second large scale renewable procurement that will be bringing over 100 megawatts into the state as well. And then finally, I already did touch on this with respect to electric vehicles. But we are looking at targeting and continuing to support the 40% emissions that that of the total emissions that the electric, that the transport industry makes up across the state. We have again, a marquee project there, the largest non Tesla public charging station ports in in the Northeast. And we've already begun very proactively working with mass transit across the state and developing master plans to ensure their transition to electrification. So in all, again, an incredibly strong year for the commercial operations group and a very broad portfolio of activities. And I want to thank the team who are committed to our customers for all the work that they did.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah, and would certainly echo all of that. As you said, the headwinds impacting the collective efforts that you and the team are continuing to undertake were certainly strong. But as you referenced multiple times, we've started, we've taken nothing and clearly have tremendous momentum in a number of key initiatives. And I'm all the more confident about our ability to execute going forward. So very, very well done to you and the team. Other thoughts, comments, questions for Sarah? All right, last on the financial side, Adam, you've been managing our expectations over the course of the last several months. And it appears you effectively landed the plane in the zone that you've been targeting. Recap it for us, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. Yeah, as we've been saying and narrowing the ranges since we've been reporting back, as of now, these are unaudited numbers. So they are subject to some change between now and the the March meeting where KPMG will will present the audited certified numbers. But as of now, we are closing at a net loss of 16.7 million for the for the full year. Obviously, that's driven by the loss of revenues, as Sarah was mentioning, from the impacts of COVID and the warmer weather. Impacts on transmission, which is mostly as a result of the ARTEP, a case that you're aware of that reversed an earlier ruling where we had a $32 million impact this year from from that, which was somewhat offset by an increase in our overall transmission rates for the for the rate year July 1, 20 through June 30 of 2021. Nonutility revenues are are off by $13 million. Again, as Sarah is mentioning, because of the delay and the pause of doing projects in the energy efficiency space, that resulted in lower fees. So it's a function of how much actually gets built and delivered to the customers that drives the fees. So those are the three major drivers of the of the drop in revenues. Drop in revenues offset by an overall decrease of expenses based on our response to the pause. There were some other outliers in the expenses in terms of additional expenses for COVID claims. Some of those will be recovered from FEMA, some of those will not. We show here the the portion that's not. And we had an increase in pension expense, which is driven by timing of the state's controllers fiscal year March 31st at the stock market low. Hope to get some of that back this year if the markets stay where they are through March 31st of this year. But that was a $40 million variance to that expense. So overall, there there was a, you know, those are the major contributing factors to the to the overall net loss. On the positive side, as you can see below, in spite of all of that, we managed to meet our coverage ratios, whether it be the fixed charge coverage ratio, the debt service coverage ratio. That is pretty much a function of the restructuring of the debt. We did early in the year with our bond issue that aligned assets and liabilities and helped with liquidity so that the result was that we were able to make our our coverage ratios. That's basically the major takeaways open up for for any other questions. Also, just to mention a balance sheet remains strong, liquidity is very, very high, over a billion, at a billion point four. And additional lines, bank lines of credit available to us as well, 300 days of cash on hand. So well above the targets for the that the rating agencies are looking for. So the balance sheet remains strong as well.
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, I'll pick up where you left off. I mean, 10, 11 months ago, when the severity of this storm was beginning to be clear, we wanted to focus on our balance sheet, our liquidity. And this has already been mentioned, but kudos again to you and the team for terrific execution on going to market and the financing and funding that you were able to put in place there. And I think at the same time, if we all had a crystal ball and said the extent of the dings that we would have to take are what you've just recapped, we'd have been very pleased. So as with the rest of the team, kudos for steering and guiding the ship through an incredibly challenging time and storm. And frankly, as I listen to you, other than those areas that are way out of our control, you really kept us very much on track and on plan. So very, very well done to you and the team. Other thoughts or questions for Adam? Okay, with that, the next portion of our meeting shifts to the committee reports. A week ago, finance and risk met and had a very, as always, robust and engaged discussion, appropriately so. Because we were recommending for a full board consideration, I think upwards of 400 million of authorization or approvals and what I think is seven different projects or recommendations. So I'm pleased to turn the floor over to Tracy McKibben, our finance and risk committee chair, for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, although you've sort of captured my report there. As you said, we met on January 19th, the finance committee, we adopted minutes. We received one staff report and considered seven items, as you suggested. And those items reaching approximately $400 million. The items before the trustees' adoptions are first, the integration of the canal's liabilities into the current NIPA other post-employment benefits or OPEP trust. We also for the capital program, as we continue to deliver on our ambitious agenda for the year, we have several authorization requests. A capital expenditure for the Macy New Scotland Transmission Upgrade in the amount of $208,320,800. A capital expenditure authorization request for the Smart Generation and Transmission Initiative Communications Backphone Program in the amount of $24,752, $24,752,178. A capital expenditure for the Transmission Life Extension Modernization Program, Niagara Switch Yard Project, the amount of $121 million. A capital expenditure for the Transmission Life Extension Modernization Program for the Niagara Protective Relay Replacement Project in the amount of $18,300,000. A capital expenditure for the Blenheim-Gilboa Power Project Unit Circuit Breaker Replacement in the amount of $10,544,000. In addition, a contract award in the amount of $1,458,135 to ABB Enterprises Software, Inc. to disconnect existing and install new ISO phase buswork. A capital expenditure for the St. Lawrence FDR Power Project Lone Salt Dam Positive Restraint Barrier Project. That's a lot, in the amount of $11,831,700. In addition, a specific contract award in the amount of $8,100,000 for the H O H L Industrial, Inc. to install the positive restraint barrier. Those are the items the committee reviewed and are now submitting them for a motion to adopt to the full board of trustees.
And I'll take Tracy's report as a motion to so adopt. So if I could have a second before we have any discussion?
Second.
Second, thanks, Michael. My only comment would be to reaffirm what was discussed last week. I mean, the Marcy and Niagara Switch Yard projects are multi-year projects. So while between the two of them, there's north of, I think, 320 million bucks or whatever there. We'll see those expenditures again as the specific projects and contracts are let over the next two, three, I think, up to five years. But further evidence of the very meaningful investment that Joe's referenced that we're continuing to make. So unless there's any other questions, I'd ask for all in favor of those seven motions to say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Terrific. Thanks very much, Tracy. Appreciate that. Okay, and then this morning, we had cyber committee. Obviously, a hot topic and very relevant and significant and critical, not only to us, but for many others as well that have been impacted by the ongoing threats in the cyberspace. And great discussion and dialogue there. Mike Balboni, our cyber committee chair, will bring forward his report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Cyber and Physical Security Committee met this morning prior to this board meeting, where the committee adopted the minutes from our July 2020 meeting. In addition, the security committee heard about NIPA's security posture and the response to the widely reported attack using a compromised version of the SolarWinds Orion product. NIPA has not been using the vulnerable version of this SolarWinds product. And an in-depth investigation has not identified any evidence to suggest that NIPA was impacted by this attack. The NIPA's security team continues to monitor the situation in close collaboration with the industry, state and federal partners. This morning's meeting was also an opportunity to hear from Eric Myers, the new Chief Information Security Officer for NIPA, and understand his vision as it relates to the security of our enterprise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No vote is required there. So, Michael, I appreciate your leadership in what's a critically important arena for us. Evidence, as is said, and as you've just referenced by the significant activity that we're all dealing with. All right, our consent agenda. We've all had a chance to review the materials that were presented to us. For the most part, it's, you know, routine materials that we see on a regular basis. And unless anyone has any questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. There was definitely a second in there. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I will selfishly indulge for a minute here, I think, and hope Keith Hayes is on. I was very pleased, Keith, to see the nature of the power allocation projects impacting Western New York. Can you give us a couple of minutes of color there? I mean, the investments were significant, the job opportunities were substantial. Can you give us a quick drive-by there? Keith there, or was I presumptuous?
Yeah, Keith's not on here, so your question again, Chair.
Well, I was just frankly making sure we took due credit for what were some significant investments and job, you know, prospects for my my end of the state and the region up here. But that's fine, Sarah.
No, 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 it's true. I mean, as I highlighted in my in my commercial operations report, we continue to receive applications and allocate power out. I think that the ADCAP 2.0, which is the temporary power assistance program, is enabling customers to get in your neck of the woods to come back from the pandemic, to have that level of certainty around the the rates that they're going to be paying for power and fundamentally support the jobs, the retention of the jobs there as well. So as you saw in the numbers that I reported, we have a robust allocation of the of the volumes of hydro. And we are consistently thinking of ways to ensure that the citizens are able to benefit from that. And we continue to have 20 billion plus of capital commitments tied to that, as well as over 400,000 jobs. So as you said, kudos to the economic development key account managers and all of the people at NIPA in the back office that support the programs, including the investments in in ensuring that we have the availability of our hydro assets going forward.
And it's great to see the frankly, the private sector investments that are being made. They're significant and substantial. Obviously, we're an enabler in all of that, but I'm not trying to take undue credit. I give the bulk of the credit to the private sector for the investments they're making and the job growth they're bringing to New York State in general and our market in particular. So kudos to all. All right, with that, unless there's any other matters to come before us, that completes our agenda for today. So one last time, outstanding outcomes and results in 2020 in the face of significant challenges and headwinds. Gil and the team, job well done. This has been alluded to, no good deed goes unpunished. So it sets the the bar in the table all the higher for 21 and beyond. So we know we're incredibly well positioned to leverage our strengths and focus on all the more disciplined and intentional execution in the months and years ahead. So very well done, everyone. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'm moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks so much, everyone. We look forward to seeing you in a couple of months. I think the next next official date is March 30th. So if not before, stay safe, stay well and be healthy. Thanks so much for being with us.